All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the June 18 Livingston City Commission meeting. And it's 5:32. Let's go ahead and do your roll call, please.
Chair Kale.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yeah.
Commissioner Willett.
Here.
You have a corner.
Yep, then Vice Chair Newt is excused this evening. All right. So let's go ahead and start with public comments. So this will be public comments for items that are not on our agenda tonight, as well as items in the consent list of items. So if you'd like to make a comment for items not on the agenda or consent items, you'll be able to do that now. I'll just remind individuals that public comments should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervise, supervision, control jurisdiction, or advisory power. Also remind everybody that they'll need to sign in at the podium. And everyone will have four minutes for comments this evening. Mr. Gager will be timing for me. Is that correct? Okay. So any, any comments for items not on the agenda or in the consent items this evening? Go ahead and see.
I'd like to go first.
Sure.
My last name starts with Atkins.
Okay.
That's why Nancy Atkins and I live at 408 Brookline Street, Unit D as in dog. Great, D grades, bad grade for a teacher. First thing is, last time I was over there, I couldn't hear. And it was really hard to hear. So please speak up. I guess you don't have Michael.
Thank you.
And I'd even debated about coming because I couldn't hear. Then I have a couple areas that I wanted to mention. One is we have several business people who passed away recently are very important people in our community. History is very important to me. I'm on the genealogy group and the historian and all that. And one is Agnes Long. She had the what curated classes before.
Oh, bone.
The bones. But they also had the cabins down there on, off of H and Park Street. Those small cabins grocery store, very well known person in this community. She died a day to 92. But anyway, big contributor to this community, the whole family was. And I wish sometime you'd honor some of these business people. You know, they were business owners for years and years and years. So anyway, that I'll just mention that. Then the other problem I have is weeds management. I talked to our condo manager the other day and she hopes to come here soon because there's, we have about 60 units. But there's some weeds that are almost higher than I am. I want to take a picture tonight. But I didn't have somebody take them. And I believe they're on Maple Street. And I think it's a city, but I'm not sure. And I didn't know that because they need to be cut down, danger, fire danger and you know, 4th of July and all that. So anyway, I don't know who to talk to on that. But anyway, I wanted to bring it up. Because I see a lot of high weeds all over and potential for fire. And then last but not least, did daily remember Saint Anthony Padua Italy. And he's the one that we used to pray to for lost items. And I misplaced something that I really want and I hope you return it.
Losing items and lost causes.
Yeah. Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else for general public comment?
Um, sure. I have, I have to leave, but I wanted to invite early.
Sure.
My name is Chris King. I live at 425 West Chinook. And I'm here tonight as the Executive Director of the Explore Livingston Coalition of the Tourism Business Improvement District, T-Bid, Destination Management Organization, CBB DMO, and the Downtown Livingston Business Improvement District, L-Bid. Since that is a consent item, I have to leave for another obligation before 6:30. So I wanted to make sure that if there was a possibility for you to ask any questions, I would love to answer any of them about the hundred and some pages of reports and documents. So I encourage you to do so. I wanted to clarify that their complex organizations budgets and the work plans for fiscal year 2425 have been approved by each organization's Board of Directors following their regulations. But I wanted to note that this year's fiscal budgets are not yet complete. And so those PNLs that are included are partial. Each organization shares a percentage of director office and administrative costs. Although L-Bid is required to show all of the payroll on their, on their budget, but it is split between the T-Bid and the CDB each is allocated by percentage of their budget. They pay a percentage of that based on what their, what their budget is. And that doesn't show as clearly. And if I have the entire budget, although it's not quite yet, at the end of this fiscal year, we'll have the whole thing. Because we have all the budgets together. And so that allocates, it shows it a little bit more clearly, but it would be about a four point font. And about 30 pages. So it's also not complete. But if you want more information, we have that. And I just wanted to sort of give you a sense, since we're going to be doing that for consent items, our shared mission is that we're a collaboration of organizations. Our goal is to build a sustainable year round economy in Livingston, while providing strategic stewardship to preserve quality of life and place for residents and quality of experience for visitors. That's what we all work together to do. And I just wanted to bring to your attention, one of the many things in those long budgets is a shared goal in the coming year is to work, this is very specifically to the downtown street closure protocol. And we would really love to help make sure that that is being followed. And that economic impact is strategically considered. The issue of some groups following protocol of having every business owner or manager sign off on their street being closed, and others not following protocol, has been accompanied by a narrative, events are good business. It's good for all of downtown. But that's not actually accurate. Some businesses, often bars and restaurants, do benefit and others largely shops providing basic goods and services do not. Sadly, when businesses that are negatively impacted have spoken up recently, they have been vilified on social media, in person, and threatened with boycotts. They do not feel safe to do so anymore. Because not following protocol has been condoned and businesses concerned have been variously dismissed or misrepresented. Levels of inaccurate information and personal attacks are escalating and an atmosphere of fear and hostility is growing. Since being aware of the RFP contract of these three organizations in 2020, we have worked hard to pivot to pandemic floods, area growth, and the decisions are made by the boards based on what their industry needs are met. Since 2022, regular overtures have been made, including T-Bid funding, the July 2 parade porta potties, and multiple offerings to pay the city street closures. That's all open to any organization that is looking for a fee waiver just to shut down the, the city streets. And during the flood recovery, our Pick Your Path to Paradise directed people to the Chambers website, in addition to the Gardener Chamber and Explore Livingston, to encourage area visitation post flood. Those are a couple examples. But the response continues to be negative. We have been advised that as long as a chamber has an active lawsuit about our group's allocation, that we avoid interaction. The escalation continues unabated and false accusations about our group, including the budget that you have before you, have been made regularly, including today. And this is an impediment to our work. And I despair.
Thank you, Chris. I'm going to Chris, how long are you, are you here?
I can be here till about 6:30.
Perfect. Okay. Okay. So we'll continue with general public comment. And then if we have, we're heading towards consent items. So I think if there's questions, we'll be able to get to you. Okay. So I will take general, so for items not on the agenda or consent items, I will continue to take public comment. Patricia, you're next.
Somebody's a mind reader. Patricia Gravow, 204 East Calendar Street. I, by the way, have magazines for you. The Gravow was featured in distinctly Montana this, by this quarter. And it talks about the future of our downtown regarding original 20 hotels that created Livingston, Montana. So I kind of proud of that and wanted to share that with you. I'm here as the president of the Downtown Building Owner Business Association. So we have this, we have Explore Livingston, Livingston Downtown Building Owner Business Association, the Chamber of Commerce in the, here tonight. So and I, one of the goals of the Livingston Downtown Building Owners is that we learn to appreciate each other and that we begin to share our activities so that we don't duplicate services in the downtown area and that we all participate equally with decisions that could affect our downtown with this, this body, because we deserve that kind of equality in, in the voice that is heard. But most of all, most of all, where do we come together? Where do we share? Where do we like each other? Where do we find the good in the other person? And I, I just briefly came back from the Rail Passenger Service and meeting and I did a pop in on it, but it was so remarkable to me that when Dave Strohmeyer and I got Rail Passenger Service through the legislation and then they legislator, the legislator, and they would sleep. It was really discouraging, but Dave Strohmeyer is the kind of visionary that pulls people together. And our wonderful city manager is on Board of Directors for Rail Passenger Service. So now instead of discouragement and anger at this legislation, not having any teeth. Dave went ahead and he has, for three years intensely gotten to the point where we have the option, possibility of rail passenger service. Not only that, but I want to speak of Saint Regis and Livingston briefly. Saint Regis, Montana got together cooperatively, liked each other, worked hard, 400 people, created a region for hydraulic point engines and is now creating a hydraulic manufacturing center in Saint Regis, Montana. And that region just got an allocation of $1 billion. Saint Regis, Montana. So during this Rail Passenger Service discussion, they said, the, the body, the annual body said, we really want to make trains. We want to make the kind of diesel modular units that will use hydrogen engines. That means that transportation across Montana does not pollute anything. And it runs on hydrogen. So they said, well, we're, we're looking for the right spot for that. And they said, how about Bozeman? And I said, how about Livingston? Not Bozeman. We have a shop that has rails to the shop. We have the, if you've ever been through and you really should go through that shop. We have everything that is needed. And when I talked to one of the people who could do this creation of trains, that's very impressive. We had Talgo in that, in those shops. So, okay.
Thank you.
So I'm just saying, we have so much to do. We have to do it. We never, you never achieve anything unless you do it with just an element of love, an element of kindness. So I'm hoping that that's the, the path we're going to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioners. Leslie Feivel, 303 East Park Street, Livingston Chamber of Commerce. Wasn't going to come up in front of you today. I was just here to attend until the very narcissistic comments made by the LBID Director that was during public comment. Again, this is something that is actually on the agenda. So very unfounded to have that during a public comment period. But it was allowed to continue to talk and make disparaging comments about the Chamber of Commerce. 116 years in this community, supporting this community and the businesses in this community. And I myself have been here for 12 years, supporting the local businesses, all of them. When a business chooses to not participate in something, we usually sit down and have wonderful conversations. Over my 10 years of being this, doing this job, never had a problem with working through the problems. Whether it's a film, whether it's a parade, whether it's an event or a commissioner's friend running a business. We've always sat down and had very cordial conversation about how it works out. The day and age of social media and the day and age of political upheaval in this community is, is right here in our faces ever since COVID. And people, we, I've been up here talking about this before, not getting along. But you know, never coming in front of the public and disparagingly making comments. We've never done that. Until tonight, I feel like, you know, my board and I, we've discussed this throughout the day to day. One of my board members was attacked by the very person sitting in this room today, making comments, narcissistic comments about the Chamber of Commerce. We're not going to stand for it. We're going to continue to do the efforts in our community in a very positive light. And getting along with all of our businesses and supporting all of our businesses and the police department in our community and putting on events in this community that are healthy to put on events in communities which bring business to your economic downtown, the vitality of your downtown. 38 years of marketing experience. My first job was at Miller's Outpost, if some of you remember that story. I have been doing marketing, professional marketing for a very long time. I have also offered, when the change occurred to this other organization, to even give assistance and guidance. And it was met with disdain and shut door attitude. So the Chamber has been doing its own marketing. I presented that to the Commission a few months ago on our annual, at the end of how 23 went for us. We'll continue to do that moving forward. And I just apparently need to apologize for the Commission having to put up with the comments that were made about another very long nonprofit organization in this community. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Leslie. Any other public comment? Anything online? Anyone online? Not seeing any. We'll go ahead and close general public comments. All right. I am going to move on to consent items. Commissioners, we have consent items A through F this evening. Does anyone want anything pulled? Commissioner Willett?
I'd like to pull C and D, please.
C and D. Okay. So we'll pull C and D for any further discussion. So that leaves us A, B, and F. Your motion?
Can I make a motion, prove action items A, B, E and F? Second.
I have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Lyons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. All right. Commissioner Willett, I will let you start with C and D, but I actually have a little comment about that too, but you can go ahead.
I just have a couple of questions and there one's very simple and one's probably not as simple. 42 of our agenda, family friendly amenities, playgrounds, outdoor park, Dino Dig Park. Where's that?
Okay. I will, we'll start with Mr. Gager and he can direct others if he needs help. Okay.
Yeah, no, great question. The Dino Big Park actually is in Sacagawea Park. It was a amenity that was placed actually about a year ago now in the, if I'm not mistaken, it's the footprint of the old bench or amphitheater that was there. It's kind of that round sandy area.
Yeah, all right. Cool.
Yeah, that's where, yeah.
And then the other question that I have is who is on the board for the what is it? It's the Visitors Bureau Board. I see board members listed in other
Okay.
consent items, but no one is listed on this one. There's no names on this one. And I'm just wondering, who, who does this represent and where is this captured?
I'll direct that to you.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I would, I would invite the Executive Director up to talk about your board members.
Sure. And it's, it's, the Convention Visitors Bureau has, is a bed tax funded through the State Department of Commerce. They also fund the Visitors Information Center, which is with the Chamber, and that's through Yellowstone Country, which is our regional partner. And we're moving towards Destination Management Organization. So there's a bunch of acronyms that are super confusing like CDB and BIC. So there's a combination of members that are largely from the a combination of Tourism Business Improvement District and Downtown Business Improvement District and members that are just on the Convention Visitors Bureau. So those members include currently, and then we have the consent item into, includes two new Convention Visitor Bureau, or I mean, sorry, Livingston Business Improvement District members. And that in, and that would include the owner of Campion, Jeffrey Galley and Susan Byerly. She is also on the Convention Visitors Bureau Board, as is Dale Sexton. And let's see, I have three boards with overlapping members. Remember them all. And then there is going to be, from the T-Bid, that would be sorry, it's been a long day. The sorry, the brain is just stopping.
It's on page out.
Yes. Yes.
It looks good.
Yeah, that has
Thank you.
all of those members. But there's a combination. So each
So this is the, this is the T-Bid.
Yeah, but the CDB, the Convention Visitors Bureau
Right.
is, is a combination that is in their somewhere. Sorry.
Okay.
This 29 spending.
An amalgam of the two.
Yeah, it's been a long day. And so there's, there's members of each so that they can all work towards the same direction and know what each is doing. And because they're all sharing funds and resources, then it also helps to conform. So it's not, you know, like they're the ones making decisions for all the funding and what's happening. And then they know what's going on with the other boards. But it's a, it's like mostly downtown district, but then also tourism district and some that are just on the Convention Visitors Bureau.
Okay. Thank you.
And that wasn't very complete. Sorry.
I think you got it.
I can give you the exact, yeah, names. The only, I think there's, there's two members that are only on the downtown district, which is James from True North and Dale from Kitchen Shop. And then the rest are on the CDB with the exception of Kathleen Call, who's from T-Bid. So there's, there's that overlap from the L-Bid and the there's seven on each.
Okay. Thank you. That's all of the questions that I had for consent items.
Okay, great. I am just going to make a disclaimer just to, so folks understand. If you look on page 31 in the packet and also on page 60 of the packet, Director King is, Chris King is discussing some of the things that she's been up to and some of the boards that she's working on. And I think 31 and 60 are pretty much the same page because they're talking about two different boards.
Those are duplicates, unfortunately.
Um, I mentioned in here, and I am with PCEC, not PCCF, just to be to make that clear. And so Chris and I sit on a board that is actually a board that is, is a steering committee that's brought together by Yellowstone Country, which is the overarching tourism region. And through my work with Park County Environmental Council as the Business and Community Partnership Director, I've been sitting on that board. We worked last summer with the Department of Commerce to create a resiliency, a tourism resiliency plan. And the state had done that through all the tourism regions across the state. So we created that plan. And now Chris and I both sit on the committee that's working to implement that. So just as a disclaimer, I do that. It's a separate board that we sit on. I don't sit on L-Bid Board or any of those, but overarching state tourism board.
It's a volunteer unpaid position that is just an advisory for what is the future as our community changes and grows? How can we get ahead of where we want to go and not just let things go unabated?
Sorry. Just as a disclaimer, so you don't know what I'm up to. Uh, okay. Commissioner Willett? Good?
I'm good on C.
Okay. All right. And so that was C. And then you want to talk about D?
I did want to talk about D for just a moment.
Go ahead.
I have a question for Mr. Gager. How many hotels do we have in a city of Livingston? Or that would be in the T-Bid?
11.
11.
Very easy.
Appreciate that. It was talented. Okay. And I'm just noticing, it's probably quantificating maybe a little bit, but I see that there are three of the 11 represented in the Board of Directors. That three of them are with the Fairfield. How are they selected?
I'm happy to turn it over to the Executive Director. My understanding is they have an internal process that solicits applications, receives applications, reviews them. And then Chris, would you like to talk about that?
Yeah. So the bylaws, the goal is to have a balance between smaller and larger properties. And so, and also at the time that the hotels need to be paying, they're, they're paid up on their assessments. We do have one property that you may notice has not paid for several years. And at some future discussion, we've talked over the years about possibly the city being part of that collection for that reason. So that is a requirement to be on that. And then just to have a balance, because the Fairfield is also home to suites. They have the, the most rooms and they are moving towards a finally having a convention visitors' center in their Phase 3, which is why it's been a real challenge to have conventions in our community. And so the board decided that that direction was really important. And then we also have smaller properties that, that are represented. So it's a balance between smaller and larger. But one of the biggest challenges in the last three years is that in the last year and a half, over half of the hotels in town have been purchased by out of state conglomerates. And so that has led to a real turnover in their management. And so ideally, our absolute goal would be to have one member from every single hotel. That would be perfect. But because a lot of them are owned by out of state conglomerates, we've had a lot of turnover. And so having somebody who is available, who is paid up and who the board was felt comfortable working with in a collaborative way, that is how that came to pass. But the goal is absolutely and ideally to have as many hotels represented as possible. And there, there are four hotels with out of state ownership. And so we have done as much outreach as possible to have that. But it is difficult without local ownership.
Thank you.
May I address that?
Not at the moment, no. We also, to talk about process. Your board makes those recommendations and then they do, just as we just did on the consent items. And then we, as the Commission, approve those, correct? And move those forward?
Every, every board application goes before the Commission. Every, every board application, um, goes before the commission.
Just, just as almost like our.
This particular packet did not include the actual board applications for the new, um, two board members that were approved. But all the previous ones have also included applications that had, um, their qualifications. And, um, and there's definitely the, the board, um, uh, nominates and then votes on those members. And, and if there is more stable um, ownership or members, um, we do regularly reach out to them and in hopes to kind of make that as diverse and balanced as possible. That's definitely the overarching goal. This was kind of a temporary, like, we don't want to go below seven members kind of situation.
Thank you very much. I yield.
Okay, one more quick question, also that, um, it's either the owner of a hotel or their designee. And the same thing with the downtown district. It's either they own a building in the district or the building owner designates them as that. So those are qualifiers. And so it's, it's sometimes it's the manager and sometimes it's the owner, but it's a combination in each one of those.
Thank you very much.
Good?
Suitably taken care of. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so your questions are answered. That's what we needed to do. Um, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve C and D.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Welch and a second. Make a note here, motion by Welch and a second by Schwartz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Just a reminder, we did public comment before this. I don't open up again after we have questions, so just so folks are aware. Um, okay, so that gets us through all of our consent items. We have two proclamations this evening. Let me get to those. Okay, so our first proclamation this evening is a proclamation of the Livingston City Commission declaring June sixteenth through twenty twenty, or through the twenty-second of twenty twenty-four as firefighter safe, state, safety stand down week in the city of Livingston. Whereas the safety and well-being of our firefighters is of paramount importance to the city of Livingston and firefighter safety state. That's a hard one to say. And a firefighter safety stand down week is recognized nationally from June sixteenth through June twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. And whereas this year's theme, fire training back to basic, basics emphasize the critical need for ongoing training and preparedness to ensure the safety and effectiveness of our firefighting personnel. And whereas the city of Livingston proudly employs fifteen full-time firefighters who are highly trained in various specialized levels, including structural fire one and two, wildland fire one and two, swiftwater rescue technician, hazardous material operations, aircraft rescue firefighting, high-angle ropes rescue and paramedic. And whereas the city of Livingston also benefits from the dedication of seventeen part-time firefighters certified in structural fire one and two, wildfire two and EMT. And whereas the total number of full-time and part-time firefighters serving the city of Livingston is thirty-nine, all of whom are committed to protecting the lives and property of our community through their, their expertise and bravery. And whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize and commend the efforts of these brave individuals who risk their lives daily to ensure our safety and to promote the importance of continuous training and safety protocol calls. And now therefore be resolved on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I carry Kale Chair, do hereby declare June sixteenth through the second, through the twenty-second, twenty twenty-four to be firefighter safety stand down week in Livingston, Montana. Further, I encourage all citizens to recognize and support the dedicated service of our firefighters and to promote their safety through the theme Fire Training Backs, Back to Basics. Sign this day, the eight, the eighteenth, uh, the eighteenth day of June, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. And I, I'm assuming that all of our fighters are taking a nice safety standout and enjoying their dinner right now. And I don't see it's well, so I thank them all.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, anything?
One of my favorite thoughts I've ever had.
All right, so we have one more pro- proclamation. Um, I don't see any
Pool's open.
That was closed today, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, with the rain probably.
Yeah, well, at least I got it emailed.
Proclamation of the Livingston City Commission declaring July second twenty twenty-four Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Livingston. Whereas the city of Livingston is committed to enhancing the quality of life for its residents through the dedication and hard work of its Parks and Recreation Department. And whereas July twenty twenty-four is designated as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Livingston, with this year's theme, Where You Belong, celebrating the many ways parks and recreation professionals foster a sense of belonging to our community by providing welcoming and inclusive programs, essential services for all ages and abilities, and safe accessible spaces to build meaningful connections. And whereas the city of Livingston is proud to employ three full-time recreation employees and four full-time parks employees, along with many seasonal workers who tirelessly work to maintain and, and, uh, and improve our recreational facilities, programs and parks. And whereas the city of Livingston boasts fourteen beautiful parks, eight of which are specifically designed for children, offering a wide array of recreational opportunities and serving as a vital community hubs. And whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize and celebrate the outstanding contributions of parks and recreation departments whose efforts enrich the lives of our residents and enhance the vibrancy of our community. And now therefore be resolved on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I carry Kale Chair, do hereby declare July twenty twenty-four to be Parks and Recreation Month in Livingston, Montana. Further, I encourage all citizens to take this opportunity to explore our parks, participate in recreational programs and join in celebrating the dedicated services of parks and recreation professionals. Sign this eighteenth day of June, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Gager.
And I would encourage all Livingston residents to, uh, visit our parks and, uh, recreate in July because I certainly will be doing that myself.
Great. And it looks like we have mobile rec summer, uh, summer fun happening um, in the parks. And I think this is probably important information because there'll also be free lunch in the park, um, from the farm-to-school program for kids. So again, folks are interested in that, please look into that. I think we were doing lunch throughout the summer, right?
Exactly. And, um, and I knew this year is the, the use of the Green Acres Park, uh, which is one of the city's most parks.
Great, thank you. All right, Commissioners?
Yeah, and I did hear that advertised on KGLT yesterday.
Great.
Out of Bozen, so.
Thank you.
Get outside, burn some calories.
There we go, all right. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to our action items. So we'll start with action item A, ordinance thirty fifty-three. In ordinance of the city of Livingston, Montana, amending chapter ten of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled, uh, miscellaneous offenses to modify section seven dash ten, excuse me, ten dash seven and ten dash eight to enable the consumption of alcohol in certain permitted areas. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. The item before you is the second reading of ordinance three zero five three. And, um, just for, uh, a reminder for you folks, as well as the, the public watching at home. Um, this item came about, um, based upon some conversations, uh, that the city team had with the Montana Alcohol Beverage Control Division, uh, related to, um, you know, consumption of, uh, of alcoholic beverages. And, um, and specifically in areas, uh, outside of the designated premise or you know, physical structure of a building. And so, um, we, uh, last meeting, uh, staff received direction from the commission that they were desirous of opening a permit process to allow, uh, downtown businesses to, um, conduct certain uh, business in the public right-of-way area, including, uh, dining and serving of alcohol beverages. And so this is the, the second step that will, uh, really en- enable the, um, the serving and consumption of uh, alcohol beverages, uh, in those permitted spaces. Uh, and, and so, um, it's section ten dash seven, uh, would allow the carrying of open containers um, in areas designated by the city adjacent to an existing business. Um, and, and the modification to section ten dash eight, um, would allow, uh, the drinking of alcohol in, uh, in the same designated areas adjacent to an existing business. And, um, you know, again, just to kind of reiterate, uh, what, what I said, uh, in the last meeting, this, um, really is, is something that, uh, the city is doing to create a pathway to compliance with state code. And, uh, and, and all of these changes were, um, devised, uh, working hand in hand with the, the Division of Alcohol Beverage Control. So, um, if, if this is approved, uh, in, in thirty days from now, um, it would be legal to, uh, consume alcohol and possess alcohol in, in certain permitted areas that will be roped off in a, a way that is approved by the state, uh, Alcohol Beverage Control Division. So I will stand for any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions? Clarify?
I was happy with the last meeting and changes made, so I haven't.
I guess I still have a question. There's not a question, um. The downtown master plan, we'll be able to visit this specifically again as it pertains to streets, parking spaces when the master plan comes out, correct? So we'll be able to amend this potentially, if that's the way we want to go with that. Because it's all, I, I mean, I guess this, we're saying this is all public right-of-ways. But I think we're kind of specifically talking about sidewalk restaurants and alcohol.
Yes, so this, this step is to allow the possession of, of open containers and consumption of alcohol in areas that are permitted by the city. The first action that, that their policy direction that the you folks provided last week, um, was on where those permitted areas could be set up. And, uh, what I heard from three of the four commissioners present at that time was that, uh, they were comfortable with anywhere in the public right-of-way, be it sidewalk street or alley. Um, this is something that we do expect will come forward in the downtown master plan with some recommendations. And, uh, you know, I would say if at that time, the commission was so inclined to offer, uh, different guidance, which would maybe perhaps limit the, the permitted areas to potentially the sidewalk, as, as the commissioner noted, yes, that would be an appropriate time to do that, yeah.
Thank you. I yield.
Okay, and I'm gonna kind of jump off of, of your question. So really, we, we talked about two things last week. We talked about the permitting process. And then we talked about this, which is the open container allowance. So the permitting process is separate from this, and that's something that you are working on administratively. Is that correct? Okay, it's a little, just so.
Right.
Yeah, I was trying, I'm trying to get that straight in my head too, so.
Well, I'm trying to get the framework clear between what we're gonna get, where we're doing permits for.
Yeah, yeah.
How do they separate out?
Yeah, but the permit is different from this, which is just allowing open container in the permitted area.
Exactly. And, and there may be, um, some permitted areas where alcohol beverages are not served. Um, whether because the, the, the business is not a permit holder or because they decide not to do so.
And will we see that permit again, or that's up to you doing your thing?
Yeah, so the, the direction that, that I heard in the last meeting was that it was the commission's desire for that to be an administrative process. And so we are going to use the allowance under, uh, the municipal code, um, for the chief of police, um, has the ability to issue permits to, uh, obstruct the right-of-way. And it won't be a, a full obstruction will not be allowed because we need to maintain, um, you know, a pathway consistent with the American with Disabilities Act. So minimum of, uh, fifty inches, um, through, through any of these, you know, kind of sidewalk cafes that may be established.
Okay.
And still has to be approved by the state.
Exactly. And that, that really is the, the primary.
Impotence for this, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the pros, sorry.
No, you're fine, go on, please.
Process needs to be approved by the state, not individual permit applications. Uh, no, yeah, so actually each, each permit holder, um, so I guess the base case, if, you know, I'm a bar, is, is to get approval for my premise. And then in order to excel outside of that premise, um, they need some sort of okay or permit from, you know, other people. And because we're the owner of the right-of-way, we're the ones that grant that. And then the permit holder actually needs to go and revise their premise with alcohol beverage control to include a portion of our right-of.
That's a, a one-time thing. That's not like a, we're doing a thing on Friday and we need to get permission for that.
So, um, it actually can be both. Most typically, it is a permanent expansion of the premise. But there are some singular event-based temporary premise expansions that are allowed. But yes, most usually it's on a permanent basis.
And we're, we're still in question stage, right? So I have a comment that I will.
Okay. And I would just maybe to follow up with that question, with your question, Tori, if I may. These are for folks who have a beer and wine license or a liquor license with the state. And then those licenses are generally only for their building. So then if they're like, oh, I want to be on the sidewalk, they have to expand out, but they have to do that yearly with the state.
As, as part of their.
Yeah, as their permitting process, so.
And they have to have their, a plan approved and all that, so.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Clarifying questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion, and then we can open it up to public comment.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance three zero five three.
I have a motion by Schwartz. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second, I watch. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. So we will go ahead and open it up to public comment for, uh, ordinance thirty fifty-three.
I spoke against, uh, about this a few weeks ago. I am opposed. It is too confusing. You don't even understand it. I, I think we are headed to a lawsuit, a possible injury. There's too much abuse. I'm sorry, I just think it's terrible. And I, I wish I'd had time to talk to the AA people because I think they would feel the same way. Uh, as an adult child of an alcoholic in a family, it is too confusing. And, and you said something, and then people are confused. People are confused about tickets for, uh, the uh, like the, the street cleaner. Imagine how they can be confused about this. I am very opposed.
Any other public comment?
A quick, um, comment, um, Chris King, again, just, um, you asked specifically about parking. And just so you guys, this is just informative, there's been ongoing conversations with the downtown business owners about something called a parklet, in which they have an extension into a parking spot that is an extended eating area that is just open seasonally. And other urban areas that have had a little bit more space have done that with great success. Um, but the downtown business owners have said at this stage in our development, they're not interested in participating in that because of the loss of parking and that they don't have the staff to run people all the way out that far. They don't, you know, they want people to come in and do it. So when you're talking about alcohol in, in parking spots, that has been discussed. And that was, um, a discussion in some of the downtown master plan things. And that is not desirous by the downtown business owners who've been queried about that, who have, um, alcohol businesses at this point, just, just for information.
Thanks, Chris. Any other? Trisha?
Hi, uh, Patricia Grabo, two oh four Skeliger Street. I have to agree with Nancy Atkins on this particular thing. This could not be more confusing to people. The way it is put together, the way it is written, it, in all fairness to people who will have consequences for their actions, it is just way too confusing. Uh, I, I, and I have a question, which I know you'll answer at the end. But if there's an event, is that Cordenoff Space one in which then one can use open containers and drink alcohol? Uh, that'd be confusing to people, um. Homeless friends who drink alcohol on the streets of Livingston pretty regularly. What happens to the, you know, does this permit apply to them as well? I mean, does this, this whole consequence for actions apply to them? Um, boy, if you are going to do anything at all with this, this has, there has to be more discussion than is going on right now, um. Uh, in all fairness to the public. that you will have unintended consequences out your ears if, if in fact you you don't pay attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Uh, public comment, anyone online or anyone else in the room? Anyone online, if you'd like to make public comment, you can also just feel free to come ask you and say your name. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Mr. Gager, Patricia had a question about events, although that's not really what we're discussing this evening. So I don't know if you had anything else to.
I I I will say what we are discussing here would apply to any permitted area. And it it, just to be clear, it it only covers alcohol, and this is not a city requirement. This is from the State Alcohol Beverage Control Division. Only beverages that are sold at that establishment in that permitted area can be consumed there. And so an individual cannot walk from permitted area to permitted area carrying their own self-supplied beverage or one that was purchased at a different, because as soon as they step out of that permitted area onto the sidewalk, they are then carrying an open container, and that is not allowed. So and 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 really, I would, I would just like to go back and and clarify. This is not a change that the city and myself and my staff initiated on our own. The the education team from Alcohol Beverage Control was in town. They observed some issues with with non-compliance. And and so that initiated a discussion. It's been ongoing for about a month now. And and we really at the city are trying to create a pathway to compliance. Because as of right now, nobody is allowed to serve alcohol on the sidewalk of the city of Livingston. And 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 moreover, vendors that sell alcohol in their premise are actually not allowed to have their patrons walk out onto the sidewalk and consume at a table that may be placed on that sidewalk. And so anybody that is doing that is is subject not only to a state punishment, but also to a local punishment. As the chief indicated in our last meeting, we do not vigorously enforce this for a variety of reasons. We are simply seeking in this action to create a pathway to compliance for all of our permit holders and and residents and 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 visitors who may, you know, unbeknownst to them, be committing a crime.
And so this really, we're doing this to allow the businesses who have been historically serving food and beverages on the sidewalk to continue to do that. Because if we didn't do that, they would lose the ability to do that. So we are trying to give those folks the opportunity to be in compliance with us and the state so that they can continue to run the businesses the way that that they have in the past. And so that's why this has come before us. Because if that were the case, and we didn't do anything about it, any of that dining on the sidewalk with places that serve alcohol with their food on the sidewalk would have to cease.
Exactly, exactly. And and events and open containers at events are handled through a completely different process than than this one.
This just adds an extra layer of protection, actually. Because it has to be a designated area roped off, not just, you know, willy-nilly.
Straight, yeah.
Um, and Bozeman had provided, we had examples from Bozeman. Sugar Ray's Hall, yeah, or whatever.
Yeah, Missoula, yeah.
Yeah, Missoula, and uh, so it's just a model we're following that we're not reinventing anything, anything like that. Just trying to be in a compliance, I'm sure, you know, anybody with a liquor license wants to be in compliance. Because they do not want to lose that.
Okay, so I think we answered questions, so.
Are you?
Other commissioners, Commissioner Lins?
I appreciate the clarification. That was helpful for me as well. I think the the one concern that I have, and and this is really kind of like a open policy direction as you're working on creating that permitting process. I'm concerned about fairness with respect to modes of transportation in the city. We heard that there's actually no interest in consuming vehicle-based rights of way at the moment. But there is interest in consuming pedestrian-based rights of way. You know, I I can picture the examples that are, that currently exist downtown, and I don't see those as a, an imped, an impediment to being able to walk or being able to use a wheelchair. But I think that careful consideration of the impacts on people's ability to move around the city and and fairness with respect to people's ability to move around the city is something that's very important to me. And I think a lot of our our citizens, and so just keep that in mind as you're, as you're constructing that permitting process. And I expect that when we're working on the downtown master plan, there will be another opportunity to to revisit and think about these things. But I'm I'm anxious about the consumption of public space for private enterprise that only takes away space from pedestrians and folks with disabilities. So please keep that anxiety in mind as you think about the process that's going to come from this.
Please know your anxiety is shared by myself and our staff as well, which is why I mentioned, you know, at the very minimum, that fifty-inch AV corridor adjacent and and through any of these things.
I think I'll just add that, you know, I I recognize and appreciate that parking is a major constraint to downtown businesses. And one of the ways, kind of an invisible way that that is partly moderated is by pedestrian accessibility downtown. You don't actually need to park right in front of the business to be able to access that business currently. And obstructing that access on the sidewalks starts to exacerbate the problem of parking. That's just, you know, one facet of how these things all work together. And it it can have cascading impacts, and let's just be careful about that.
I'd finally add to your comment. Leaving the pact that we received from Missoula, they actually have a sixty-inch minimum for their pathways. So they've gone above and beyond, and I think we're free to do that as well. We can make any width we need as long as we don't go below the fifty, which I'm totally in agreement with.
And and if I may, to be clear, we do, in our sign code, we do actually have a sixty-inch requirement for clearance or around sidewalk signs, sandwich boards, that type of thing. And that's something that we're reviewing at a staff level is, is it fifty or is it sixty? Our minimum certainly is going to be fifty and and work with applicants through that.
And I'm just gonna remind us of one thing, remind us all to speak up, so just so everybody can hear us. I don't know why, like, we're all, I all of a sudden I realize we're all getting, like, quieter. Not to, not to derail the conversation, but, um, anything else, commissioners?
Good for me.
Okay, all right, are we ready for a vote? Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Chair Kail.
For?
Commissioner Schwartz. For? Commissioner Alliance. For? Commissioner Willett. For?
Uh, motion carries. All right, we're gonna move on to action item B. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, accepting utility and access easement granted by Karen Schneider for her project located at Lama Lane and authorizing city manager to sign associated documents. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kail. The item before you is the acceptance of utility and access easements related to a project on Lama Lane that was, exists outside of the city, but as has been discussed at a previous meeting, connected to city utilities. And this really is the the last step in in that process. And so I will stand for any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any clarifying questions?
I have a clarifying question. I think it's just a, it's just a matter of language. It's on one of six. It's also in the the next easement that we're gonna do. Uh, page one oh six, uh, part two. The language, trim, remove, destroy, or otherwise control, meet trees and brush inside or outside the boundaries of the easement, which may, in the opinion of the grantee, interfere, threaten. So the order of the easement is not actually the order of the easement. You can encroach outside the easement for brush clearing, et cetera?
So generally, what that refers to is a a tree that that's base may exist outside of the easement, and the branches are hanging over the easement. And so to the extent that that situation is occurring, we have the ability to to trim those branches and the trees. That's probably the most common application of that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Right, you'll.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Lins, I, it look like you might ask a question, so I'm gonna ask.
Uh, I was, uh, it was not that look.
Okay.
Was not, I needed him to ask a question.
Okay, sorry.
I haven't seen him in a while.
Okay, I just don't want to move on without. Um, okay, if there's no further questions, I would entertain a motion, and then we can open it up to public comment.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution five one three four and open those chairs.
Hey, I have a motion by Willett. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second, Mr. Schwartz. Okay, uh, so let's go ahead and open this up to public comment. So anyone with public comment on resolution number fifty-one thirty-four? Feel free to come on up, name and address.
Okay, good evening, commissioners and city staff members. My name's Garrett Schultz. I'm Headwaters Engineering at eleven oh five Reeves Road West, Suite Six in Bozeman. I'm here to represent the owner, Karen Schneider. I was here, was it last month, to talk about this project. This one's a lot simpler than that topic, I think. As city manager, Mr. Gager has already said, this is really to just close out what's already been done. The water main has been constructed. These two easements, one is for access, so the city can drive their vehicles on what was a driveway, a private driveway. So this would provide a a public access easement for that. And then secondly, a utility easement, so that the water main doesn't perfectly follow the driveway as constructed. Otherwise, it would have been one easement. That's why it was separated into two easements. I think that's all I have to say. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment?
Nancy, I'm in the middle of a debate so far. Uh, you know, I live close to this only a few blocks away. And I don't know what it's all about, but I just wanted to say, there are no llamas on Lama Lane. There are sheep nearby, but lama, the llamas have moved down a few miles. And I, is Lama Lane in the city?
Now, I, I can answer that question. Make your comment, and then we'll answer any questions, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other public comment? Online, anyone online to make public comment on, uh, resolution fifty-one thirty-four? Feel free to come up, mute, and say your name. All right, I am not seeing anyone, so we'll go ahead, close, close public comments. Mr. Gager, I'll let you answer that. Is Lama Lane in the city or the county?
Uh, this section of Lama Lane is not in.
It's not in the city, in the county, okay. All right. Uh, commissioners? Love the vision, discussion, anything? No, okay. I don't have anything either. Seems pretty straightforward. So roll call, please.
Chair Kail.
For?
Commissioner Schwartz. Or Commissioner Alliance. Or Commissioner Willett. For?
Motion carries. All right, moving on. Uh, okay, resolution, this is action item C, resolution fifty-one thirty-five. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, accepting a water utility easement granted by Livingston Lodging Two and Divide Development for the Home Two Suites project located on West Park Street and authorizing city manager to sign associated documents. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kail. The item before you is a, another utility easement related to the recently completed Home Two Suites Hotel project. And as part of that, the development team placed some water infrastructure across their property. And this easement will allow the city to operate and maintain that water main on private property. Something called the, while the infrastructure is in the ground. And the the hotel recently opened, and so this is kind of the the last bit of cleanup business for that development. And I will stand for any questions you may have.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions on this resolution?
One here.
None, okay. Uh, if I have no questions, I would entertain a motion, and then we can open the public comment.
Make a motion to approve resolution five one three five.
A motion by Schwartz. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Nothing by Willett. Okay, let's go ahead and open this up to public comment. Uh, so anyone with public comment on resolution fifty-one thirty-five, please feel free to come on up to the podium. I don't see anybody in the room, so we'll go online. Anyone online, feel free to come up, mute, and state your name. And we'll ask one more time in the room or online. All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comments. Commissioners, discussion deliberation?
Nothing for me.
Okay, okay. Again, seems like pretty straightforward information for us. Thank you. Uh, roll call, please.
Chair Kail.
For?
Commissioner Schwartz. For? Commissioner Alliance. For? Commissioner Willett. For?
Motion carries. Right. We are moving along, commissioners.
We did it.
Oh, I think you can chat about it.
Like toss it back. All right, so we're gonna go on to, actually, I think this is our last action item of the evening. Action item D, City Commission Listening Sessions, Mr. Gager.
Uh, thank you, Chair Kail. The item before you is related to the commission listening sessions that were discussed two meetings ago. And so I have come back with a proposed schedule for you folks that includes one Saturday each month doing a a listening session, as well as we've identified some opportunities for the farmer's market to, you know, get out and and meet the public there. And so I I welcome your input on the proposed schedule. I will also say for the the first listening session, we, I I would offer, and and after consultation with the senior center, they would offer as well, their their facility for that first Saturday morning listen, listening session on as proposed for June twenty-nine. And so I welcome your your thoughts on on whether that seems like an appropriate. I knew it's downtown, it's a large public space. And so, you know, if everything looks, looks good, we would, I guess this is an opportunity to sign up for some sessions.
Okay. Um, I guess first of all, senior center as a meeting location seemed appropriate for folks.
Yeah, they had one or two, didn't they? I think they just finished their rec center.
Or their gym or something, yeah, great, yep. Um, okay, I, I'll start, and then maybe we can just fool around. Um, farmer's markets are hard for me. I'm a lot of times working at the farmer's markets when I'm there. Um, but anyone can come visit me at the waste station if I'm there. I'm happy to chat. I'm sorting your trash.
Trash.
Um, bye.
Let's see, it's another.
Yeah, um, well, this is one of you, it's okay. Um, so I would just say farmer's markets are hard for me. Um, I'm happy to do Saturday listening session. I just looked at my calendar. I'm, I'm away on the twenty-seventh of July, but could do the twenty-ninth of June or August twenty-four. So I'll just throw that out there, and then why don't we just go down the.
Okay.
Ball, does that?
I'll do this farmer's market.
Okay, you're gonna do the night, so that's tomorrow?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else and do any other ones you want to do?
I'm available for all the rest.
Okay.
You know, we can, were we noticing those that? I thought there was mention of that.
We did notice.
So if we accidentally have a.
Yeah, we noticed the last one and this was really, this will help us understand if we should notify. We're, we're happy to notify everyone as a potential forum if, if we need to.
But, um, I would be happy to attend all of them.
Okay.
You know, so.
Let's go down the table, see if people is available, yes.
Comment on the, uh, senior center ones?
Oh, yeah, which ones are you available? Don't write your name in yet, but which ones are available for?
June, I can't do, but.
Okay.
I could do the other two, so.
Okay. Commissioner Lyons, I know this is a little more difficult for you. Does anything work and if not, that's okay too?
Um, I think that I can do the July 17th farmer's market.
Okay, great.
And I don't think that the June or the July Saturday work and maybe, but also maybe not, the 24th of August.
Okay.
That one's a maybe and the, the one, the one I can fully commit to is the July 17.
Okay. That sounds good. Commissioner Willet?
I have no restrictions on any of the dates. So I can do any of them, I can do all of them. I'm sure I will hear about this when I get home. Uh, I don't have the paper calendar in front of me, the master list, but I mean, I'll, I can be at the farmer's market tomorrow, I can be at the senior center on Saturday. I mean, I, I don't really have anything conflicting yet that I know of.
And then we'll have, uh, Commissioner Newt to have a good see what her schedule is. Do we, so this is, and I guess I'll ask this too. We've got four farmers markets on here. Do we feel like we need to do all four? I mean, I, I guess that would be my question too. Do you want, I mean, do we have commissioners that want to, you know?
You know, if, if I may jump in.
Yes, please.
If Commissioner Schwartz does tomorrow.
Yeah.
And then I do the 17th of July. We can check in about what kind of the attendance and the, the sentiment about the need is for that.
Great.
And then we can go from there.
Okay, that sounds good.
So it, it, yeah, it might be a shame for everyone to overcommit and then not have people come.
Right.
Because they know they can see us every other week in, in this room.
Yeah, yeah, okay, was that?
Yeah, I'm, I, I'm following the lead on this one, because I can go to any of these things. And so I'm totally flexible on these.
Okay. I think it makes a, go ahead.
Just one, uh, senior center, did they have, have a specified time or a time that would work?
Uh, so, um, yeah, we generally have thought about 9:00 AM.
Okay.
And there.
That's what I was thinking.
The facilities available from 9:00 to noon on, uh, June 29th, if we would like it.
Okay. And I think I would make the recommendation that for this, the other listening sessions that are like either at the senior center or we decide to do the pop shop, I would make it the recommendation that we have two commissioners at those.
Yeah, I agree.
I'll do the 29th.
You want to do the 29th? Okay.
Yeah, I mean. I'm at the farmer's market anyways, I mean, I go basically every Wednesday, but I'll do it for certain.
Okay.
I'll do the 27th.
July 27th? Okay. All right, well then, um, we'll have this, then I'll put my name, well.
And I'm flexible, so.
Should I do the 20, so I could do the 29th? Should I do the 29th or we have that to schedule?
That'd be nice to have that.
Yeah.
And then you can see with the turnout.
Okay, let's do that, okay. So, uh, Mr. Gager, I have, and I think you're, I, uh, Commissioner Schwartz is gonna, he's gonna do the farmer's market on the 19th. Commissioner Lyons is gonna do it on the 17th. I have myself and Commissioner Willet scheduled for the senior center on the 29th. And what is the timeframe on that?
I would start at 9:00.
And how long should we do it for? How long have you done it for in the past?
Couple hours.
Like 9:00 to 11:00 or something?
Yeah.
Okay, does that work?
Yeah, that's usually plenty.
Yeah, I think that seems like plenty. I think 9:00 to noon seems like way too long.
People want to get on with their day on a Saturday, especially at this time of year. Whether it's a little different.
Yeah, okay, so 9:00 to 11:00?
Sure.
Okay. And then we've got Schwartz on the 27th and we'll get somebody, we'll see if Melissa maybe can do that one. Or we'll figure it out. Does that make sense? Is that good for you to get us, get started?
That sounds fantastic and, uh, appreciate Commissioner Lyons' suggestion that we may just re-agenda this on the, uh, the July 16th. Maybe just to, you know, check back and give you thoughts.
Okay. That's good, um. Okay. Somebody send me a email, just.
We certainly will, yes.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, so that is, and do you need anything else from us on that?
No, that's perfect, thank you.
All right, so, here we go. Yeah.
Have to vote on that.
No.
Yeah, well, uh, you know, we did have a, an, an action to approve the listening session schedule, but, you know, you folks have kind of given me enough direction and we can work with it.
All right, so now we will move on to city manager comments, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kail. I appreciate everyone's, uh, time tonight. And given that, um, that this is the last, uh, city commission meeting before the July 4th holiday, I would just take the opportunity to remind all Livingston residents and visitors that fireworks are not allowed within Livingston city limits. We have a lot of, uh, old woodhouses that are very closely, um, built together and, uh, it really is a tinderbox out there. So we would, uh, encourage everybody to, uh, participate in a safety stand down the week of July, uh, 1st and, um, and, and keep the fireworks either at home or, or somewhere safely outside of cities, thank you.
Thank you, uh, okay. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Willet?
Uh, thank you for, uh, a great meeting and I'm looking forward to seeing everybody at the parade and other events as they come. Are you?
Commissioner.
Uh, glad to be home. And, uh, shortly before I started on the commission, Vice Chair Kail, sorry, Vice Chair Newt told me that summertime is the best time to be in Livingston. And having, um, been, having snowboarding been a huge part of my life for a long time, I found that hard to believe and I've always been a winter person. But this now being my fifth summer in Livingston, I've become a summer person. And she was right all along, and summer is the best time to be in Livingston. So I'm just glad to, to share in the festivities with all, um, my, my fellow residents. Glad, glad to be back.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz.
I'll go back to the Chicago area and represent you. Yeah, over the 4th, 4th of July and the humidity and all that. But, but nice thing is Lake Michigan's right there to keep, be cool, I can do a little saving. And, yeah, I have safe worth and, uh, are you?
Thank you. So I'll remind folks that there will be four nights of fireworks this year around the 4th of July, because there's four rodeo nights this year, correct? Um, so no need to shoot off your own, just watch the ones that are happening.
Keep your dogs in.
Yeah, keep your dogs in and, and or dragged and medicated for some of us. Um, so, yeah, so to all of you dog owners, including me, yeah. So good luck with that and that's always different, folks. Mr. Gager, would you remind us, because we're a little, we're going to be a little off schedule, meeting line. So just to let the public know, our next official meeting is.
The next regularly scheduled meeting is Tuesday, Ju, July 16th in this room at 5:30. We are taking, uh, a week off for the July 2nd parade.
Great, okay, so just for, so we remember and the public remembers we'll be a little off schedule. Everyone have a great holiday. Enjoy safely and smartly, please, whether you're partying with your friends around the barbecue with some beverages or you're on the river, please use all the appropriate protection that you need to be using, um, and be safe and smart. Thank you. I yield and I will, um, ask for a motion to adjourn.
Summon.
Second.
I have a motion by Lyons and a second by Schwartz, all in favor?
All right.
Uh, this meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at 6:53 PM. Thank you all.